Next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. I need a motion to approve. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski, second by Mrs. Vogel, all in favor. Aye, opposed, that passes six to zero. Mrs. Feather may be late to the meeting tonight. Before we go to our next item, again, just to give a little bit of a preview, the lay of the land for people that were here last time and that are here again tonight, you know, of course, we're going to go through our regular agenda. We have our comments from the public, where we definitely want to hear from the public, but what I want to let you know is that when the time comes, when we talk about old business, which is the redistricting discussion, which comes up right after comments from the public, we do have two guests with us tonight. So we have Mario Carina, who is the CFO for RIDE, so we have the representative from the Department of Ed, and we have Megan Herilla, who is our operations owners project manager from Colliers for us. So she's been working with us from the beginning. And we have Tim McGrath, who is our finance director for the school department. So there were questions that came up last time about timing, school size, those kinds of things. So we will be asking some of those questions. When we, the school committee, will be asking those questions of our guests. When that time comes, as I said last time, it's a discussion of the school committee, so we're not able to engage with the public during that section, but as you come up and give public comments, if there are specific questions that you have, that you want answered, we can make note of that and bring that into our conversation. But we have a lot, we have a lot to discuss tonight, based off of a lot of input that y'all gave us last time. So I think, I think that's really good. So I just wanted to let you know, all know how that was going to work. So we will move into our next item on the agenda, which is the student government activities report.
Hello, my name is Maddie Essies, and I'm this year's president of the student government. This month's focus was our winter dance, the Winter Ball. We hosted this last Friday, January 19th, at Wright's Farm Restaurant. All grades were in attendance and enjoyed the great food, music, and each other's company. This is the second year we had this dance back, and it was a great night for everyone. On behalf of student government, we would like to thank all of the teachers who spent their night chaperoning at Wright's. Going forward, our next big event will be the Pennies for Patients Drive we do in order to support the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and more specifically, childhood cancer. In our upcoming meetings, we will discuss the logistics of this year's events. We will definitely host the Second Annual Volleyball Tournament, where teams of students and staff pay to play in a tournament in the Wellness Center, where all of these proceeds will go to the Pennies for Patients Foundation. And we're hoping to introduce an out-of-school event for these weeks, which we will have finalized details soon. Lastly, with the addition of flex period to the high school in a few weeks, we're planning to host meetings during this time. Our advisors are going to offer every day as an option for students and student government. This will be a great use of the time, as meetings after school often have conflicts. This is a great solution for those who cannot make it after school, to gather with everyone and be a part of student government. We're overall incredibly excited for this addition to the day. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thanks, Maddie. Next item on the agenda is the consented agenda. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting, 111-2024, and approval of minutes from the executive session, 111-2024. I need a motion to approve. Motion to approve by Mrs. Rogalski, second by Mrs. Vogel, all in favor. Aye, opposed, that passes six to zero. Next item on the agenda is personnel announcements. Mrs. Dreszek.
Thank you. We have two announcements tonight. We have an appointment effective 1/18/2024, Janet Smith, a preschool special education teacher, one year only. And we have an unpaid leave of absence for the 2024-2025 school year. Laura Chadburn, world language teacher, Spanish at Cumberland High School. Thank you.
I think we have a question. Mrs. Rogalski.
Hi. I noticed, looking at that, that is our third Spanish teacher, I believe, to leave for next year.
Second.
We have three world language teachers who are not here next year, correct? Is the other one French? Because I remember there were two before, and now there's a third.
Just the two Spanish teachers, so far for next year. We have one gone this year.
Okay. And do we have a plan to recruit more Spanish teachers? I know it's one of the hardest positions to fill, and I will not do it.
Because, because we don't have anybody that currently holds that certification, we're able to post for that right away. So starting in April, we'll begin posting for that position for next year. You're welcome.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is report out of the executive session meeting on 1/25/2024. Report out of the executive session votes. We did not take any votes in tonight's session. And the next item is a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session, and a motion to seal the minutes. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski, second by Mrs. Vogel, all in favor? Aye, opposed, that passes six to zero. Next item on the agenda, superintendent's report. Dr. Thornton.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Committee. Mike, take it away. First up, Madam Chair, we do have a PT day on Friday, February 2nd, 2024. We have a lot going on that day. Just to give you a highlight, Kate, folks will be working on right to read. It's our last day to fulfill that regulation per the state. We have flex block work at the high school. That's rethinking advisory, in a nutshell. We have Alice training, which I'll talk about more in a minute. We have safety care certification to help de-escalate students. We have parent professionals and speech paths working on autism. We have nurse teachers peer sharing. We have district mental health folks getting together, and we have guidance folks working on I-Plans, so ILPs, excuse me. So a lot going on on February 2nd. Mike? Alice training. If you remember from a couple years ago, we launched this, alert, lockdown, inform, counter, evacuate, right? That's our training. But since we did the training, we have around 120 new people that need the training. So we're going to do it on this day. We have some trainers lined up, and we're going to do the program with them. So that's happening. I'll go back one more, just one more second. Also, I should mention, thank you to Chief Benson. He's actually working with the principals next Wednesday on this topic of active shooter. So next week, we'll be working with the principals in a simulation with the chief. He's our lead on that. That's next week, Wednesday. Okay, on to construction. Just to recalibrate, let's talk about Ashton. This is the Ashton addition, what it looks like, looks like right now. It's complete. Just, we have to paper down to keep things tidy. That's an example of a new classroom in the new addition of Ashton. You can see that's also, we're complete. Now, let's go to the Reno side of the, of the building here. This is exciting from Mr. Chandler. This is one of the racks for a server. So the technology, all the infrastructure is starting to go in. We have the rough electrical going in all throughout the building, so that's happening. We have the hallway still being put back together in terms of the ductwork. Next slide, you can see the ductwork going in. There it is. Next, the fire alarm in the old building is being modernized. If you recall from last year, it's now going to be what's called a fully addressable system. That means every location in a building, every room, has a monitor, if you will. So that's all being redone as we speak. And this is the Ashton gym. If we do what we want to do, that back wall in the middle there, that would be, become a stage. So that wall would get blown out, and that would be a stage at Ashton. So that's exciting. So that's something we would look at to do, hopefully, in the spring when it warms up. So that's exciting. Pricing's coming in for all the areas, flooring, steel, and all these things. I'm told by the experts, things should pick up in about two or three weeks as far as really starting to move at Ashton. But that's, I think, one more, Mike? As with any Reno, you have things that are in the budget and things that fall outside the scope of the budget. These are the two heater boilers at Ashton. They're 28 years old, past useful life. The one on the right died last weekend. So we're going to put those in the scope currently. They're not in the project. We're going to put them in, obviously. But it's tricky as far as like, it's a Reno budget. You can't do a brand-new building, do everything. We have to kind of pick and choose. Obviously, 28-year-old boilers have to be addressed, so that's going to go in. We're getting pricing on that, and that'll happen. Yeah, I think that's my last slide. So essentially, you know, I think, next time I come to you, February 8th, I think we'll see more activity at Ashton. Right now, that's where we are. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Everything looks really good at Ashton. Do we have any idea if they are running on schedule, behind schedule, ahead of schedule?
That's a question I ask all the time, and I am told not to worry right now that we are good. I think as the trades come in, as they say, and we get pricing for everything, we'll get a schedule and like a run-out for the year, and then we'll have a better understanding of a schedule. I would think maybe even in the March meeting, we can bring you a schedule at that point, show you. They have that color-coded when, like plumbing is done, 100%, they show each trade and when it's done. So we probably give you that schedule in March, I imagine. Megan, can you write that down, March schedule? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Next is reports of standing committees. First item, fiscal management subcommittee update. Mr. Collins.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. The fiscal management subcommittee met this evening. We have five resolutions for the full committee, no payment of the bills. And the only thing that we, another thing we discussed is that we currently have bids out for transportation and owner's representation, OPM. It's not, it's just more of a best-practice thing. It's not, you know, it's not a reflection of dissatisfaction with any services or anything like that. So next month, we should start seeing these bids come in, so we'll see where that comes. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next, policy and procedures subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorella.
Policy and procedures did not meet this week. We expect to meet soon.
That would be the same with the achievement and communication to subcommittee update. We did not meet this week, but we are hoping to get a meeting on the schedule in February. Next, district health and wellness subcommittee update. Mrs. Rogalski.
We're back to our district health and wellness updates. We had our meeting this afternoon, actually right before fiscal committee. Just a few quick updates for you. There are a few different things that we're working on. The first is called Project Adam. This is something that was started, I think, back in 1999, when a 17-year-old football player died of cardiac arrest. But it was brought to the committee last year by Donna Marshall-Kowski, who is the head of the nurses for the district. And it's basically creating a cardiac emergency response plan, specifically utilizing CPR and AED training, the automated, oh, the AEDs, yes. So I reached out to Rhode Island affiliate. They have different affiliates in every state, and they're very excited that we want to become what is called a heart-safe school. We're going to start at the high school. The plan is to start there, try and figure out the program, implement it, work out any kinks, then perhaps expand it to the middle and elementary school. It does involve a team of up to 10 people. In each school, we'll be training both staff members as well as students to help if there is a sudden cardiac arrest anywhere. So it's basically just creating a solid plan, and not that anyone is mistaken. There are crisis response plans already in place at school, crisis response teams. This is specifically for sudden cardiac arrest of students, staff, or visitors. And it would be a set plan in place with more people trained in CPR, more people trained in AEDs. So I will be starting that next week. I hope to meet with people from the high school next week. We have a little update on vape education from the deans. This was one of our focuses last year, is that instead of just it being something punitive when students are caught with vapes, maybe we could offer them an alternative. We can offer them an education class in order to quit, because obviously, that's the goal that we would all like. I've been told that there are approximately 12 students. We've had to take advantage of that already this year. So I think that's great news. I'm hoping to get them in at the end of the year, the deans, for an update on how it's gone, the program, that they're happy with it, things like that. We were also introduced to a program called Kyle Cares. This is actually going to be coming to us in a full committee next week, or next, next month. It is about student mental health. So that'll be coming. And then just last, we had an update from Sodexo on our food waste pilot program. As of now, every school has a shared table in the cafeteria. It's been really successful. Kids can grab extra food if they're hungry. The nurses can grab extra food for students who might need it during the day, and all of this is leading to less food waste. Liquid waste is now happening in the middle, sorry, in the elementary schools. So instead of liquid waste going out in the trash, which of course weighs a ton, now it's getting emptied into buckets, and the buckets are getting dumped out. So we're saving on, again, what's going to the landfill there. And in December, the middle school and high school started collecting food scraps in the kitchen. So I actually love this. Peels, rinds, anything that are cutting up, if there's extras. Before, it just used to get dumped and taken out and go to the landfill. And they are now going into biodegradable compost bags, and Bootstrap's Rhode Island, or Compost Island, is picking them up every week. They are being composted into organic soil that's being returned then to Franklin Farm. So it stays right here in the town, and it's going to help all the people who are part of the community garden, and I just think it's fantastic. And they are planning on a middle school program, specifically at McCourt. I know they're starting a green team to get kids excited about recycling and food waste. And then in the fall, they're going to start implementing some more food waste processes. So it's exciting to see what we have going on.
We have the most interesting updates. I love learning about all that stuff. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is comments from the public. So if anyone from the public would like to speak, come up to the microphone, state your name and address. There's a three-minute time limit, according to policy. Mr. Fiorella is the timekeeper. And so I apologize in advance if I need to interrupt you to let you know your time is up. But if anyone would like to speak, the microphone is open. I don't, I think we're okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us tonight. I just want to start out by saying thank you to the members of the school committee and everyone else in attendance for listening to us last time and this evening. We really appreciated the polite discourse and support, and found it to be very informative. So thank you very much. I just had two questions that I was hoping to have addressed. Number one was, what was the rationale for redistricting the neighborhood in a manner that was inconsistent with natural boundaries? So as we had identified last time, the neighborhood seems to be carved out of what would be natural boundaries. And I was just interested in learning a little bit more about the process that the committee went through, as you looked at different options to learn a little bit about why that particular segment was chosen. And number two, oh, in addition to that, I remember that last time, there was some mention of buses being unable to turn around in other neighborhoods. So I appreciated that comment, but I think our neighborhood is probably the most difficult to turn around in. And then number two was, what was the projected plan for the redistricting in 2027, as we try to be proactive rather than reactive? My interest in that was primarily because my youngest is a first grader, and so projecting forward to the 27, 28 school year, he'll be a fifth grader. And I was just curious for people like myself, if that would mean redistricting once again. So that would be to go from Ashton to the trans building, to Garvin, to potentially another building. And my last comment was, I just wanted to acknowledge what was spoken of last time. I think we all think all the schools are really wonderful in Cumberland, and my students have, my children have attended Ashton, and Cumberland Hill, and McCourt, and have had very positive experiences at all the schools. So where we were coming from was more for continuity's sake, rather than any particular school versus the other. Though we are very partial to Ashton. We appreciate Nidia Carbonic and all of her team's work. Thank you so very much.
All right. Good evening. My name is David McMillan. I live at 2390 Diamond Hill Road. I'm the father of two boys, second and fourth grade, at a community school. My wife attended the last meeting, so she presented me with notes, and I tried to digest what she put forth to me. Just some background of, about myself. I'm a public servant, like I'm sure many in this room. I worked for the federal government. My prior life, I was an agency head for the city of Baltimore. And so when I look at what's happening with the redistricting plan, I look at this more as, you know, change management, and how you go about doing these things in a way that's the most beneficial for the community, but also the least damaging potentially to us students. And so my primary worry is, in terms of children, is mental health impact, particularly coming after the pandemic. My sons, we lived in Baltimore before we moved to community about three years ago. They went through three different schools during the pandemic because of the shutdown, and then the restart, and then we weren't comfortable with some safety measures at the second schools or third schools. So community's been their fourth school in those five years, but that's where we've been, had the stability. And the facilities obviously look great at the other schools. I'm sure there are also fantastic teachers, but I do worry about the stability for the children and the mental health impact. The prior speaker made a great point about how the redistricting's being divided. We live on Diamond Hill, and that seems to be a boundary. My eight-year-old's best friend is on the same road, but across the street. So he'll be remaining if this goes the way it goes at community, while we would be transferred. They're best friends. We can see the bus pick them up. I'm not sure logically why he wouldn't be able to continue taking that same bus. It's going to make the same stop. It's always made. And in general, I, my wife said, and I'm hearing this through notes, that there might be regulations in play here. But as a, you know, former agency head and civil servant, I'd be pressed to know what the hard stop is for those. Is it a grant or funding? Is there incentives for this? Or is it that there's a hard stop that has to happen? I haven't heard that really cited, and that begs a lot of questions to me. I think any decision that you all make should be balanced by the mental health of the children and lessening that impact. I think for change management, there, I would imagine there should be phase-ins of new registrations, or a way that you phase in certain students. Obviously, my fourth grader is going to fifth grade next year. I would want him to finish out that fifth year at community, and then has a natural transition to middle school. It might be harder to make that argument for my second grader, but I also would love for him to be able to maintain the same friendships, particularly given the boundary and the way the busing, I think, is likely to occur. We're going to see the same bus, take the same route, and we're just not allowed to go, if you will. So I mean, I think that's really, I think the prior speaker nailed a lot of points as well, but I would like to see more answers about how the boundaries are drawn, as well as, you know, what is the actual firm deadline here? What is the hard regulation? Is it that this pool, the class sizes need to be a certain size by X date? Or is this a government situation of grant funding is tied to compliance with a regulation by a certain time? And then, you know, what other options have we looked at? Have we looked at, you know, trailers or other options to temporarily phase this in, and then allow, you know, people who are now moving to community, they will abide by the new boundaries? I probably use my three minutes, but thank you for listening, and your patience.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the committee. Thank you very much for allowing me the time to speak again, and for the time last week, even though I ran over. I promise I'll give that time back now. I, I had an opportunity to read through Dr. Thornton's write-up that you posted on the website. I appreciate you being thorough with that, and I think you reiterated a lot of the points that you had made during last, the last meeting. The point that I had brought up was the, what we felt was an unnecessary inclusion of Ashton students in this redistricting process, when community shares a border with a school that you're moving our children to. And you referenced in your, in your piece there that it had to do with the, the specific data involving the ages of the children in those populations in those other neighborhoods that were adjacent. So since it sounds like this whole decision is being hinged on this data, I believe it would be unfair for us to not be, to not be provided with that same information, so that we can all, you know, since it's, since we're the lives that are, our children's lives are the ones that are being affected by it, I think that data should be made public, if it hasn't already. I, if it's been made public already, then I apologize. I just haven't seen it on any of the, at any of the websites. So that would be very important information for us. And I think Mrs. Feather said at the last meeting, that taking a, I think, a community approach to the decision-making and coming up with creative ideas is really important. So for us to all be sharing in that information that you're using here, I think would be a really good idea. And then during your time, I would love to hear if you made any progress on the proposal with the trailers as well. I think that's a great alternative. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, so we will move into our old business for discussion only. Still, there's no vote. As I described last time, this is, this is the chance that the school committee has to actually discuss and ask questions and all of it. There isn't work that happens behind the scenes with us as a, as a, as an open board group, yeah, Open Meetings Act. But, and I'll just give a little intro to Dr. Thornton, because I think he's done, and we're seeing this for the first time tonight, too. So I haven't even looked at my packet yet, but Dr. Thornton has modeled five different models. He listened to all the feedback from last week. He's going to give an update on trailers. He's going to give an update on five different models. He's going to walk us through. In each model, he has also got the population by school and by grade, and looking at that. And we have, as I've mentioned, Mr. Carino from RIDE, who can help answer questions about some of what you were asking, about school size, and getting schools to a certain size, and how do we have to do that. There were questions last time about, and I know you're going to say this, Dr. Thornton, but using some of the open spaces to convert them to classrooms, and being able to do that. So there are questions like that, that RIDE, the CFO from RIDE, will be able to answer for us. And then we have other questions that came up about changing the timeline. Could we push some things off? Could we wait? Things like that, that also Megan from Colliers can also help address. I mean, Dr. Thornton has the answers, too, but we can have this full discussion with the people in the room who actually know all the details. And again, this is for discussion only tonight as well, but we will, we'll get to it.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
And I just want to say one last thing. I'm sorry. I want to say, in the, I think this is my eighth year in the school committee. Last week's, last meeting was my most favorite meeting of all time. It was the latest meeting we've ever had. We adjourned at 10:00 PM. But I really felt it was a good discussion, thoughtful comments, good questions. And so I'm really pleased that we're able to do this, and we're going to have more tonight. So I just want to thank all of you who came last week, and the comments that you gave that I thought we could, it really helped us have a productive conversation. And hopefully, you know, we have to redistrict one way or another, but I think it's important to have the input. So thank you, everyone.
All right, Madam Chair, let's take it away. First, at your table, you have packets, which we, on the website tomorrow. Essentially, I have five math models I'm going to talk through. On the second page is the data that someone had mentioned. You'll see like our worksheets, where they have numbers of students by grade level, by class, that kind of thing. So you can see how we did it, and it's all in pencil still. As you can see, it's just, it's our worksheet. I want you to see that. So we'll talk through five different permutations we have of, of these boundaries. Then we will answer the trailer question, and then we will go to the expert panel for some more questions we had last week. So without any further ado, Mike, if you put Model 1 up, and Model 1 is what we talked about last time. That was the model that, I'm calling it the Winsong Pound, Little Pound, Lipit Estates model. And committee, you probably can see that, we kind of have boxes where they're located, whether, you can see yellow Ashton, obviously, right, and the blue is Garvin. So you can see those. So in this model, just to reiterate from last week, this model fits in the, the math of the buildings, the classrooms. I know one of the parents had mentioned, what's, how's it work around class size? By contract, we must be in those numbers, 23, no more than 23. I can go two over that number, by the way, for K through 2, and no more than 25 creates, oh, four and five. So essentially, that's my, my model. I have to fit in those numbers. So in this first model, we do fit in those numbers. Keep in mind also, on these sheets, these are snapshots in time. You may see a class that has a couple more than we want to see, and we usually massage those out as the year goes on. This is January for next August, so don't hold me to the exact number on the worksheet. It's kind of like just how it works right now, if you will. So in this model, 92 students from community to Ashton. That's that Winsong run, right, the Winsong route going over. And as you know, the 36 Lipit Ashton to Garvin. In this model, as you recall from last time, rising fifth graders, 28 of them are part of the plan. In transportation, the busing works quite well in this model. So that's what we had last meeting. Now, to add to this meeting, let's go, yes?
Hold on. Can we ask some questions back to that Model 1?
Sure.
And when you mentioned the 28 rising fifth graders, that means they will stay in the school they're in now.
They have the choice to stay where they are.
Yeah, okay. And siblings would be on a waiver basis.
Siblings, as I mentioned last week, would be, would apply for the waiver, and we would do our best to get them with their sibling, as we have done in the past, yes.
One of the questions that was raised tonight, and I know you've talked about this, too, is about, you brought up last time about the bus turnarounds, the challenges of some of the streets with the bus turnaround. Could you just talk a little bit more about Model 1, and what, how the buses impact?
In terms of Model 1, and by the way, I didn't do all this work- In terms of Model 1, and by the way, I didn't do all this work. I can't take credit. It's myself and the team. So, one of our team members is Tracy Walton on transportation, and she does the routing with Durham as far as how we route buses. And in this model, the run, I believe, from Winsong Pound, Little Pond is a couple buses, and it works quite well. It's what they run now, pretty much. And Lipit is a seamless run for Durham to go in Lipit and come out. It works quite well. That's why they advocated for that model. And I'll talk more about bus runs as we go further in the models. Model 2, we wanted to look at some other models, and we, keep in mind also, as we do all this work, sometimes we would get to a model and then talk about some different locations, then stop midway through as we realize that's not viable. But in this example, we wanted to run the models out for you, even though we thought maybe they would have a problem. We ran them out to show you. So, in this one, it's all of Little Pond, Bork, Broadview, and Pound Road. That's Model 2. In this model, Upper Little Pond County, Bork, and Broadview, around 37 students would go to Garvin. Upper Little Pond County, I'm sorry, first one's Lower Little Pond County. Upper Little Pond County, that's Nate Whipple to Bork. And 45 Pound Road to Little Pond County, that's 40 students. They'd go to Ashton in Model 2. In this model, we have some problems with busing. We have two buses on Little Pond County going to two different schools. That's not what you want to see. This model, we'd have a one-bus add if you did this model, adding one bus to the fleet, and you would have buses passing each other, and just not what you want to see in Model 2. So, just keep that in mind. Model 3, Mike, if you go to number 3. Model 3, we're calling Top of Lonesome Pine to Farmview South. That's basically east side of Diamond Hill. And then Broadview, Lower South, South Side of Angel. In this model, the three blue areas you see, kind of light blue, green, I'm a little colorblind, those areas, those go to Garvin, and that's 75 students. In this model, Community stays near capacity. In this model, Garvin is a bit crowded, and if you look at Model 3, Garvin, give you a sense of it in the sheets. Garvin, you're at 26, 26, 25 in first grade, give you a sense. Could that get better over time? Yes, but right now, a little crowded for my comfort. So, that's one of my observations on Model 3. In Model 3, once again, transportation is a challenge. You're really using two buses inefficiently. You're picking up in the same areas and then going to two different schools. Once again, an example of that for you, Lonesome Pine, you'd have one bus doing the top of Lonesome Pine, and then one doing the bottom of Little Pond. They would then intersect at an area called Farmview Drive. Basically, another bus would do Diamond Hill Road one side, same road Diamond Hill, another bus, other side of the road, two different schools. So, once again, that's a problem, and this model's a two-bus add if you did it. Okay?
And how much is an additional bus?
Our contract's out to bid right now. Our current contract is $85,000 approximately per bus. That's our number, give or take. Model 4, Mike, Broadview, all of Little Pond, Bork, 45 Pound to Little Pond, Angus, Fairhaven, and all of Lower Angel both sides. Now, this model, I think, contemplates some of the map that a parent brought last time. We tried to look at that, part of that piece, so we wanted to look at that. And really talking about Brookwood and Deborah South, that kind of area. And this model, Broadview, Little Pond, and Bork, and Pound, approximately 74 students go to Ashton. And in this model, Angus, Lower Angel, go to Garvin. That's around 54 students. So, this model improves on Model 3. It does fit within the limits, I would say, of the worksheet. Garvin's a little tight. Look at Grade 2 in Model 4. I kind of observed that. Grade 2, Garvin, was at 26, 26, 25, so a little tight for my liking. Transportation, once again, is the challenge. Two buses, two different schools on Diamond Hill, and all side streets on Angel are going to Garvin, except Lipit. So, that's a problem. That's a one-bus add. Now, the fifth model, actually.
Hold on, hold on, a couple of questions. Sorry, we're going very quickly. You said Model 4 was a one-bus add?
Model 4 is a one-bus add. Model 5 actually has some promise. Model 5 is Broadview, all of Little Pond, Bork, 45 Pound to Little Pond, and don't do Angus and Fairhaven, but still include all Lower Angel both sides. I know it's a lot to take in, but if you look at the maps and kind of digest them after a while, you can kind of see them and kind of take your time looking at them. But with this model, Broadview, Little Pond, Bork, and Pound, 74 students go to Ashton. All of Lower Angel, 37 students, go to Garvin. Model 1 and Model 5 are very close fits with the numbers on the worksheets. So, I would say they're very close. Model 1, essentially, Lipit goes to Garvin. Model 5, you're having all of Lower Angel both sides go to Garvin. That's really the difference there. To me, if I have to pick one over the, first, I would tell you Models 2, 3, and 4, to me, I couldn't recommend to you. Model 5 is good, but I, to me, the one differentiation pertaining to is Lipit moves 28 students approximately, and 37 students move with a Lower Angel model. So, like nine less students are impacted with Model 1 and Model 5. I would tell you, Model 1 and 5 are close, but nine less students are impacted in today's numbers. That could change. But to me, still, if I had to recommend one to you tonight, it'd be 1 still, with 5 coming in a close second. With 2, 3, and 4, I couldn't recommend to you.
What is the total number of students impacted in Model 1, again?
Model 1, we have 28.
Wait, but aren't there 36 in Lipit?
There are, but we have grandfathers. We have eight. If you look at my, we have eight who would, rising fifth graders.
Oh, okay.
Who, I'm sorry, are out of the calc. Sorry about that. Yeah, it's 36, but take out the rising fifth graders.
And then.
So, essentially, the delta is 9. As we can count it right now, nine students, nine more students are impacted by Model 5 than Model 1. That's why I would tell you right now, if I had to pick one, I'd pick Model 1 still, knowing that, you know, numbers can change, but I'd pick Model 1 still. Now, having said all this, I want to continue. I know last meeting, I was talking to Ms. Smith. I know the parent mentioned, too, in '27, what's, what could it look like? Right now, you know, the BF Norton Project was approved by the voters. As I mentioned last meeting, it has to go to the Planning Board and to the Town Council for authorization for the bond funds. But if those things both happen, and we build BF and it opens up in fall of '27, I would tell you, not that I could be certain, but I would say there's a very good chance all these places we're talking about on the border of 295 would go to Garvin. If you don't go now, there's a good chance you'd probably go when BF is built. Because when you think about it, when you have to build a new BF Norton and fill from the south-north, we're adding 175 seats. We modeled it the other day and got around 121 seats and got right next to Garvin. Obviously, we'd want Garvin to still have walkers. You wouldn't have Lonsome, sorry, Lonsdale Farm. Wouldn't have, want to have Lonsdale Farm take a bus, you know, that they walk to Garvin. But you could have the walking zone of Garvin and then go around on Heinz and over here, and you would get your BF population. Having said that, you now must fill Garvin up. So, that would be the northern, southern boundary of Ashton, right, coming off. So, what I'm saying is, whatever model you pick, at some point, keep in mind, in '27, if we do build the BF, which I think we will, you would probably have the other sections come as well. So, that's my observation in 2024.
Yeah, so one of the things we talked about last time has come up, you know, multiple times, is the impact of the students, the Lipit students who are this year here in the trans building. Then we talked about them having another transition to a new school. And one of the questions that was asked was whether that could be, even like one of the options is to delay that, like.
That delay question is down below with the expert panel. That's coming in a few minutes.
But even in any of these scenarios, in any of these scenarios, and this was a question that came up, in the fall of '27, it is likely that students are going to get redistricted. They're definitely going to get redistricted, and maybe the same students could get, could go to Garvin, either go now or go later, is seemingly what.
I would say that that's a fair assumption, given what we have for numbers right now. Yes.
Yeah, and that was one of the things for people that weren't here last time, when we showed the map of Cumberland, and we showed where all of our schools are, that the challenges of where our schools are not equally distanced from each other, and we are shaped like a pizza slice. So, that is one of our challenges.
Before I go to the panel, one more just observation. At some point, we will have the committee try and take a vote on this. I would encourage you to think about, you know, when you want to do that, because we open up the kindergarten portal. We can't place K kids until we have boundaries. So, just keep that in mind as we kind of figure out what meetings you want to actually tackle a vote. Kindergarten portal opens up late February, early March, but we would want to keep that in mind. Having said that, I want to now pivot to the panel. And the first question is for Tim McGrath. I know last time, they, folks asked about the possibility of trailers as a strategy. So, Tim, can you talk about the trailer question?
Yeah, so, good evening. We looked into a local vendor that's done work for the school departments in the area for portable classrooms. The pricing came in somewhere in the million to $1.2 million range. And keep in mind, none of those funds would be reimbursable at that point, because it's temporary classes. That price could dramatically increase whether or not the town looks at the units as permanent or temporary, because if it's permanent, it's going to be there for over a year. We have to put foundations in, which would involve cutting up the parking lots that were just done, driving pilings in. There's electrical hookup challenges in that scenario. Also, there's questions of bathrooms on the lower end. On the higher end, if we added in the bathrooms, because there's no bathrooms close enough, according to certain regulations, the cost would rise there. And then there's obviously security concerns about having portable classrooms outside of Community, along with Ride, the state might require a connector as well, depending on if we're using it for more than a year or not. So, many challenges and high costs with the scenario.
So, is that looked at for portable classrooms at Community? Like, how many portable classrooms does that number?
Five would be a full track.
I think last meeting, the question was Community, it'd be five. We'd cite them on the basketball court, the new court to the back of the new CAF.
Yeah, so five portable classrooms would cost us a minimum of $1 million.
Yeah, on the low end, I think it would be higher than that.
Mr. Fierlala.
Several years ago, when we were making the plans of which buildings would be done first and how we were going to move the kids to the trans building, we discussed and actually investigated the idea of mobile classrooms. And one of the main concerns that we all had at that time was the lack of security. We would not be able to really secure those classrooms the way that we secure our buildings, and therefore, I believe there would be a security risk to the children. And for that reason, I will never support mobile classrooms.
So, at this point, I have three more questions for the other two panelists, in no particular order. You can certainly take them, whoever wants to take them. I know last meeting, it was asked, can Community School stay a five-track school? We're currently a five-track school, as you know, and we went to a four-track in our plan. Could one of you talk about the possibility of staying five-track? What that would involve? Could that work?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, formerly of Forest Avenue in Cumberland. My rep is still here. So, there's a few layers to this question. I think that there's a construction plan, and then there's a choice that you're making for redistricting. For construction, there's a few implications that you should at least be aware of, and then you can decide how to proceed with them. So, the first one is, this plan, which was approved by the state in May of 2020, had over a year of work here in Cumberland where it was decided how the buildings will be configured. That plan was approved by the school committee, was approved by the Town Council, was approved by the General Assembly, was approved by voters, and approved by RIDE. And we have a signed contract that says what you're going to do. The plan as presented at Community includes removing some classrooms and adding learning commons, which is consistent with your plan, which you've just opened at Garvin, you're doing at Ashton, and at Community Hill. So, veering from that would, number one, be inconsistent with the very plan that you've put forward that was presented to voters and approved by the school committee and approved by RIDE. One of the complexities, though, if you were to deviate from that, aside from the bureaucratic hurdles of changing agreements, if it were possible, is that projects, and you're positioned very well to receive those temporary stated, you know, bonuses that are available, you have a provision in your Enabling Act, which allowed you to get access to the fund, that requires you to get 50% reimbursement. And if you deviate from this plan, you have to go back to design. So, you're already at design development. You have to restart to rethink the plan. You will likely miss the trigger point of June 30th, meaning you wouldn't even have access to do any projects at Community School. So, I would keep that in mind. That veering from that likely jeopardizes any more work at Community, because you won't have access to those funds pursuant to the Enabling Legislation, which was passed by your Town Council. So, that was a local requirement to access those funds. So, those are the two pieces. If that, if that second layer was resolved, we could, we could discuss the first one, but it's difficult at this point to veer, and that's not even addressing the benefits of a learning common. I think that's secondary. You've had a variety of educational planners and meetings in 2019 and 20. Almost every new elementary school in the state is building them because of the benefits of project-based learning and flexibility that's being offered. These buildings are going to be here for 20, 30. In some cases, we see them around much more than 50 years, that you want to prepare for what is to come and what you're going to teach kids. We don't know what we're going to teach in the year 2035, things that AI is becoming a big thing now. So, these spaces allow for flexibility to occur. So, that's, there's a programmatic benefit for it, which clearly Cumberland and the, and the school committee already approved and voted, and you're actually doing it on your schools. But there are also implications here of veering from a plan, which, does that make sense now to veer from a plan when this likely was decided in 2019 and then approved by RIDE in '20? And then you have the complication of, do you even have access to the money if you change your plan now? Bond Council would have to verify that. But I remember addressing this a few years ago, that you actually don't have access to any of those funds if you, if you miss those bonuses.
Just to follow up on that, if I could, I know originally, Community's around 675 students, let's say, for the footprint they had originally, Community. Can you talk about how RIDE thinks about how many kids you size in a building, like how that works?
Yeah, so Cumberland, as you know, you're one of the unique communities, just like Lincoln, who you're, you're growing. Actually, you're bucking the trend, where in other parts of the state, we're pushing the newer and fewer mentality, because there's just kids disappearing. South Kingstown's down 20% in just the last five years. Providence is down 19%. So, kids are vanishing by the thousands. So, it's a different message that we would tell South Kingstown or even Warwick, who's doing the, you know, those buildings. But, you know, for, there's a few ways to approach this, right? There's an efficiency perspective and then a programmatic benefit perspective. You know, ideally, again, in ideal world, you have maybe 400 to 600 kids, because you can have a librarian who's always there. You can have a nurse who's there. You can have an assistant principal, guidance counselors. In this, if you have, some districts do go really big. But that, again, this would have been decided in 2019 if you were going to go the other direction. Newport, for example, has a declining population. They closed four elementary schools and built one, because that's, that was responsive to their information, their demographics. In this case, you're growing. And presumably, when you complete these, you'll start to grow even more, because less children will go to BVP, and they'll choose to come to Cumberland. So, that's, there's not like a silver bullet to the answer to your question, and I think that a lot of these times, they're local, but you are one of the unique communities who are growing so that you have to be flexible in your choices. And it seems like you're going through a methodical process to do that.
Question from Megan, if I could. Oh, sorry. Just Megan, the other question would be, I know was asked last time, can a construction project at Community be delayed? And if so, how long? Let's talk about maybe wait for Community till BF is done and then do Community? Can you talk through if that's a possibility?
Sure. So, similar to what Mr. Corino just mentioned was, in terms of the schedule and what's been approved back in 2020, we were agreeing to a five-year capital plan. So, as part of that agreement, we have to complete the work at Community by the end of 2025 in order to take advantage of the state aid. So, pushing this off would not allow us to capture that funding.
Can you explain what that means in terms of dollars, if we do it, if we don't do it? Just round, round numbers, if you don't get the reimbursement versus if you do?
So, we would potentially lose out on the, all of it. Well, okay, you want to jump in?
Yeah, again, assuming that you even have access to the $10 million that is remaining for Community, you would lose all $10 million, because you wouldn't have any access to it. If Bond Council said you could move forward with it and forego the reimbursement, potentially 60% would be lost. The other piece that hasn't been mentioned, that with delaying, construction prices go in one direction, right? They go up. So, if you were to undertake the same project in four years, you're going to get less for the same amount of money that you have, assuming you even have access to those dollars.
Madam Chair, those were the questions I had.
Couple of questions, Ms. Smith and then Mr. Fierlala.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to re-understand, if we take away those learning commons in Community and use them as classroom spacing so that we do not have to move students, we do lose a piece of funding, or it will impact all of the funding? Is that correct? Because we then wouldn't be meeting the scope of the plans that were approved by Because we then wouldn't be meeting the scope of the plans that were approved by general assembly and by RIDE and everyone else?
Well, the other piece is, you have to design whatever this alternate plan looks like. So you've already spent money designing this project over the last year. To then hit the reset button, you will lose, I don't know how many months you've spent working on this, but any new design, assuming we can clear some of these other hurdles, which are financial and regulatory, are, do you even have the time to design it and meet that deadline that's in statute? The answer at the moment seems like no. Perhaps, again, if you really wanted to ask bond council and others, we can explore that. But it doesn't seem like that is a path to at least changing that. This is separate than this discussion.
Sorry, Mr. Fiorella. If I could just continue, and Dr. Thornton, maybe you can help me with this understanding then. No matter what, from the sounds of it, if we don't meet that 2025 deadline with finishing community, we are in trouble for funding. And it seems like incredible trouble with funding. But if we were to continue with it and get it done, and bring in the trailers or classrooms or mobile classrooms, then are we really meeting what we were supposed to with RIDE? I mean, how does that crossover happen?
To me, I guess it's counterintuitive. We're doing construction projects and renovations, and now we're putting trailers in. So I'm not sure that's a match to me.
Mr. Fiorella.
Also, and Mr. Corino alluded to this, the town council, when they approved the funding of the bond, they were very specific that we needed to receive, I believe it was 50% of reimbursement. If we don't make that 50%, they're not going to give us the money. So that'll be, and that would take another vote if the town council would change that. And based on the conversation and the vote they had on the bond for BF Norton, I would be surprised if that passed, you know, with a 7-0 vote like it originally did.
So we asked for, to get these questions answered, because this was one of the questions, a couple of these questions that were asked at our last meeting, about whether we could delay and just do our big redistricting all at once when BF Norton's ready. It sounds like the answer to that is no. We asked if we could delay community, so that we wouldn't, not even till then, but even just a little bit longer, to get us through this transition until BF Norton's ready. And that also sounds like a risky endeavor. Part of the reason we were talking about community at this moment is because community's scheduled to come up to the trans building next year. And there's not enough space for the 675 students, or whatever it is. So for those students, it was make the change, so that the kids who go to community will move to the same place next time, and the kids that don't go to community will go to their, like, final elementary school. Which is what the Lipid Estates, what happened to them, is they're, went to the trans building, and now could go somewhere else, where the rest of their school goes back to Ashton. So we're trying to avoid that two-step, that two-step move. It sounds like on the community school side, we, it doesn't sound like we have many options. So that was that whole discussion about what can we do with community? So I don't know if there's other questions or comments, because what it feels like to me is that that, that's kind of a non-starter. Like, we can't delay community, we can't keep community the size that it is, and so now we have to deal with these five models that are in front of us that take that into account. Right?
I think that's fair. And also, I know people would say, you know, is there a sixth, seventh model? I would say honestly, I think we really have looked at these neighborhoods in this boundary area. I mean, certainly, is there a 5.1 or 5.2 model? Maybe we could look again, but I think we really have spent time on this. And yet, to us, you know, two, three, and four, to us are non-starters. One, to me, is better than five, but five's also viable.
I have many questions, and I've been trying to organize all of my thoughts while all of this is going on, so pardon me if I jump around a little bit. First, basic question. The difference between Model 4 and Model 5 is only the neighborhood east of Diamond Hill below, I don't know any of the roads down there, Fairfield, Fair? The only difference is this blue section is no longer going?
Map, Mike's putting up four alongside a five.
Yeah.
Trying to put them side by side.
So only that, the blue is the only difference, correct? In that model, between those two? I don't see any changes in the yellows or anyone else?
That's all I see.
Yes, the challenge, was it Model 4 and Model 5, to us, the biggest piece was Model 4, you're adding two buses, you're really being inefficient with the busing.
Model 4, you said there's only one bus being added?
I'm sorry, you're correct.
Okay, so, but in Model 5, no community would go to Garvin. But some Ashton would go to Garvin. But now, we're going along Angel Road instead of above 295. Instead of Lipit, we're moving both sides of Angel Road.
Right, so Model 5, in contrast to Model 1, where Lipit is moving, Model 5, instead you're moving essentially all of Lower Angel, both sides.
Okay, and why was Model 5 better than Model 4? Because Model 4 requires a new bus, but Model 5 would not require a new bus, but Model 5 impacts nine more students. Am I just correct?
Model 4, for me, two things. First, Garvin was a little tight, and then the busing was problematic.
And does it need an extra bus in Model 5, or no?
No.
Model 1 and Model 5, neither one needs extra buses, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's the first thing. Thank you. Down the road, that 2027 redistricting you mentioned, along the 295 line, people should be prepared to move. Does that mean some kids are going to get redistricted twice? Or are we going to, I mean, can we guarantee? I would assume not, because none of us are fortune readers, fortune tellers. But, I mean, I just want to...
Yeah, I don't think I can guarantee any population estimate in 2027. I can tell you, looking at the numbers and where, you know, where the students are residing, I'd say that there's a better chance than not, that we will impact neighborhoods on 295 in 2027.
Right, but my main question is, because impact on 295, I mean, 295, you have north, you have south. I don't know which sections of 295 we're talking. The neighborhood's bordering it on both sides, the neighborhood's just south of it. Like, do you have an idea? I just, I'm...
My idea would be bordering on both sides, there was a chance, yes.
So there's a chance some of these kids will be moving twice in three years?
I don't know that sitting here in '24, no.
There's a chance. I know, I was like, four years, three years? Can't count.
Yeah, Ms. Smith.
So, if I could just take what you're saying, Mrs. Rogowski, the goal here is, no matter who we're moving now, those students are part of a move now, but we're not looking to move them, they shouldn't be moving again in the future, because the biggest issue that we're going to have is, as you mentioned, we are going to be moving the BF Norton, and when that's done in 2027, we are going to stop filling BF Norton south-north, which means that students in Garvin right now, from that side of it, are the ones that would probably be moving to BF Norton, where the Garvin line would only maybe move upward. It's not going to take away or move downward to what we're doing now. So the students that are moving now, there's a very good chance, my understanding, they're going to move later if they don't move now. And we're not looking to move them to Garvin now, and then back to Ashton later. I mean, whatever moves to Garvin now is going to be staying Garvin.
Yeah, just to build on that, I think if you're going to see a moving trend, it's moving south. There's no moving north later, it's coming south.
Correct, but all the students along 295 that are coming from community down to Ashton, those would all be now in the line to then theoretically move to Garvin in 2027, because they're all along that line. Correct?
No. No, because you probably have to, you have to, you have to...
Well, I'm just going on what he said, which was along 295, and I'm looking at the map, at the yellow, of the community students moving to Ashton. That's along 295.
I guess my point in saying that is...
Sorry, I know there's no definites, I'm just trying to get an idea.
I guess my point in saying it is not to, like, hide the ball, if you will, and let everyone know, these are possibilities.
And that is four school years from now. Yeah, but one, two, four school years. You could have a first grader. Yeah, but I mean, it's not the whole elementary population.
Okay, so there's that. Trailers are looking kind of like a no-go because of the cost. However, if we're going to talk about cost, if we're going to talk about the possibility of cost, to revisit, which is what I voted for, no one else did, the third summer slam option at community. Work would still be completed by 2025. We would still have the common living, learning spaces. But it would be at a cost to the district to do that, correct?
If I could start first and go to them, cost is a factor. Been talking to the construction team, it's just finishing the project. Summer slams are plagued with delays, and you're looking to start and finish construction jobs in like 10 weeks. And for example, if you're opening up a ceiling, or doing a fire alarm at community, you could finish the whole job in 10 weeks. I know one parent last time said, I think, do summer slams, then do the rest on second shift. It just doesn't work that way. So I guess I defer to the experts, but I don't think you can do summer slams and guarantee you're going to open every summer after the summer's over. But I certainly defer to the team.
Certainly. Dr. Thornton hit all the main points. There's definitely more risk in trying to do summer slams, based on the scope of work that we have planned for community, and then just maximizing the scope of work with the contractors for the most efficient pricing. So it just becomes, what's going to make the most sense to get the project done most efficiently and in time for opening the school? And it's just, there's a lot of variables taking this, breaking the scope down over two summers.
Speaking of summer slams, I mean, when you look at the work that was completed at Cumberland Hill, and also at Garvin, they had full school years to do that work, and we barely finished on time, which we really didn't in either case, because of all the delays that we had, lead times, things that just weren't available, we got to keep on waiting for stuff, and we had those issues. One of the reasons that Ashton, I think, is going so smoothly, and will continue to go so smoothly, is because they did a summer slam, and now they have a full year. And all the major work, and all the major parts have been ordered at this point. So hopefully, any of the delays that we would experience would not be large delays that would actually prevent it. I'm hopeful that Ashton will actually be prepared and handed back over to the schools earlier than the last two buildings had been. And hopefully, that would be the same case for community school when its time comes.
And just one more, because, you know, I'm seeing, hearing parents talking. Everyone, they're like, oh, we'll just file a waiver, and we'll just ask to go back. And it seems to be a common thread among parents, that since we have granted 80% of waivers, that they will just do that. And so my question is, if we continue to grant the waivers, then all of this is for naught. Correct? I mean, obviously, you would do it based on room, you said, but if we need to move kids, then we need to move kids. And keeping them, or giving them waivers and allowing them to stay, it seems to go against the whole point. Plus, if you're looking at community kids who are supposed to move to Ashton, and removing Ashton kids to Garvin, and then the community kids are allowed to stay at community, then these other kids will move for no reason. And I think that that's a concern, because we, people want the waivers, and they're great. They're a great thing to have, they're a great ability to be able to do for families. But I just, I would, I would be concerned about waivers next year, and how many will be granted, and if it cancels out everything that we're doing.
I guess my thought there was, I certainly work at the pleasure of the committee, if you want to forego waivers for a year, I can do that.
Mr. Fiorella.
The concern about the waivers, though, is, although they may get the waiver for that first year, they have to apply every year after that. That's fine for fifth graders, they'll be, you know, they'll be all set. All the other kids, though, as population, again, is increasing, they may not be eligible to get those waivers. So actually, the kid that, say, let's say, is in kindergarten, instead of moving into first grade at Garvin, may end up moving into Garvin at second grade, which I think would be more difficult. I mean, that's the parent's decision, of course, but, I mean, waivers are not going to be the answer, because waivers have to be applied for every single year, regardless of circumstance. And some of us, maybe, there was a horrific story here in town, and that family got special discompensation for placement, and they had to apply every single year to get the waiver that they requested. So it's going to be that way for anyone.
Yeah, Ms. Smith.
Dr. Thornton, I know that the waivers, in looking at that, I believe you stated, are only for allowing any rising fifth-grade students who have siblings, and it's the siblings that would be potentially open to do waivers. Is that correct?
No, in addition to that, every year, we do waivers in generals. Any person can ask for a waiver. So for example, if I have a student going to Ashton, is room at community in grade two, let's say, they can ask for a waiver.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a, oh, sorry, Mrs. Vogel. I just have one question. What is the waiver process procedure, and how are they determined to be approved or not?
The waiver process, individuals would email, I think I put it on the website last time, it was Lori Carr, right? And we would then have their email date stamped, if you will. We then gather all the waivers, and we look at them end of July, early August, and we fill them as we can. As I said, last meeting, pre-boundary discussion, we filled around 80% or more. I couldn't make that promise, I could achieve that this time, but we do our best. It sometimes works out where folks want to go different places, it just works. But we do our best.
Okay, I have a question again, back to Model 1 and Model 2, I mean, Model 5, because I, the one on the left is Model 1? Four. Oh, yeah, okay, that's why I was, can you go, can you put Model 1 up against Model 5?
That's not even Cumberland.
Yeah, that's why it wasn't matched up for me. So, in Model 1 and Model 5, is, you see, oh, in Model 5, we've got the arrow down there, yeah, that says proposed Ashton to Garvin. So in Model 5, that still includes Ashton students moving to Garvin. Is that right? In Model 5? And in Model 1, we have Ashton students moving to Garvin?
That's correct in both, just different groups.
So we don't have a model that keeps all the Ashton students at Ashton?
No.
Yeah, Mr. Collins?
I was, I was actually just thinking about this, too. All, so you're suggesting that 1 and 5 are the best. So 1 is Lipit Estates, many of the parents are here. The only variance is, we just changed neighborhoods.
Yeah, right. It's just another set of kids.
So what happens is, you know, in a hypothetical, if that, if we chose 5, we would just have a different neighborhood in here.
Right.
With the same argument, so.
Right.
But, and that's why I think, I was going to ask that question, you said, what's the difference? You're in favor of 1, simply because less kids are displaced. Correct?
That's correct.
And there is no model that has no Ashton students being impacted?
That's correct.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Collins?
You know, and I think this was raised before. I think somebody, somebody had emailed me, why didn't you guys think about this? We didn't think about this, because we didn't anticipate the skyrocketing enrollment. So the original plan was to go from community to Ashton seamlessly, because we were creating extra space in Ashton to accommodate the students that were going to be removed from community school, based on the plans approved by RIDE. So as a result of that, we hit, you know, we got, we ran into a roadblock because of the skyrocketing enrollment in Cumberland. Many of those people happened to be concentrated in the Ashton district, so we weren't, whomever was designing these maps, you know, identified that we had to move 36 students out to make weight as part of the original plan. We didn't anticipate this many people being enrolled in Cumberland Public Schools until, you know, and if you look, we've talked, I've talked about this repeatedly, and we've had these presentations, we have these yearly projections of a population increase in town. And our number right now, what's our enrollment in the district? It's 51...
Around 5,080, 85, give or take.
Yeah, it's up to, it's close to 5,100. That projection we got this time last year puts us at the 2930 number, and we're only in the 23, 24 school year. So nobody, including the people hired to do the population predictions, didn't even anticipate how many people are moving in. anticipate how many people are moving into town with school age stroller.
So, yeah, Dr. Thornton...
I'd recommend, Madam Chair, our folks tonight do not do the projections. They were done by Cropper and Nesdaq, two different companies. We had three projections done.
So I said, so Model 2 has no impact to Ashton students, but Model 2 includes the addition of a bus and also splits up the community students. But, right, is Model 2...
2 is also a little chaotic. You're adding a bus, you're also creating some bus chaos, having two buses go on the same roads. You probably have longer bus runs in adding a bus. Once again, for Model 2, you have 37 students going to Garvin, right? Lower Little Pond County, Bork, Broadview, and then you have Upper Little Pond County, which is Nate Whipple to Bork, right? 45 pound to Little Pond County, that's 40 students, and they go to Ashton. And just to give you insight again, as you know, when this map, we see it, you know, live, we see where students reside, and that's, you know, how we capture these. I think sometimes people think we can just draw like a line across Cumberland. It doesn't always work that way, it's where the populations are and also how you route them.
Ms. Smith? Dr. Thornton, and I know that one of the, one of the parents brought this up earlier in their question, but I believe that you discussed this at last meeting, I just want to make sure I understand it. It was the question about the boundaries and why we chose some versus others in natural boundaries. But it's my understanding that we already have a large population off of Angel Road at the upper part of Angel towards Diamond Hill, where if you cut down, those side streets are already in Garvin?
Mr. Chandler on that?
That's a yes.
Right. So they're already in Garvin, so we're talking about adding another street off of the same road, but it's just obviously in a larger neighborhood, whether it's the Lipit neighborhood, whether it's the lower neighborhoods, it's just a different neighborhood, but it's still a street off of Angel where that street already has a large portion of its streets going to Garvin.
That's fair.
Okay, thank you.
So like, in Model 5, Ms. Smith, is this what you're saying, with Model 5, that neighborhood is already, you know, the kids across the street are going to Garvin already? Essentially.
Correct. If you're going from Diamond Hill down to Mendon, sorry. If you're going Diamond Hill down to Mendon Road, my understanding is that with the exception of the very lowest part of Angel Road, maybe Old Diamond Hill and that area, the majority of all those streets are already in Garvin. And that, and then at the top of Angel on the Diamond Hill side, of that top, the roads on the right, there's upper ones that are also in Garvin. Is that, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the names of the roads, is that Chu Road or something along those lines, right? Those few roads?
Mike's pointing them right now.
Right, so that's Angel Road that he's pointing at now that's running. So as you can see, there's already, this is where the split has been happening, and I know historically, this is what has occurred. Now we know that we're going to have to stop moving south, and we're going to have to stop moving north to south even further as BF Norton comes online.
So that area south of 295, where the blue and the yellow section is now, would likely go to BF Norton? Is that what you're saying? I mean, Garvin, sorry.
Right, they, whether that's now or, so some, right, it sounds to me like one neighborhood now is going to have to go, and what that neighborhood is going to be is what we're questioning. But that, down the line, we could probably find the rest of those neighborhoods going as well.
Also, I would add, it's not as simple as, like I said, drawing a line. There's not a lot of streets or street areas in that right across. That's why you might go up. Lipit has the concentration, that's why you might have this kind of odd bulge in the map, because that's where the students reside. That's how it works. It's not just a universal line right across. So, Madam Chair, I guess for next time, I can certainly feel more questions from the committee, either now or via email, and, you know, certainly bring it back to you on February 8th, I believe.
And these, these things will all be posted?
Yeah, we'll post these tomorrow on the website, the maps with the worksheets behind them, tomorrow.
Other questions, comments from the school committee? What's that? Oh, hold on. Okay, so no further discussion on this tonight. We will decide if our next meeting will be a discussion only or a discussion and vote. I think we have options in front of us. I think Dr. Thornton has exhausted the options for us to look at, and now we will have to make a decision. I want to thank our panel very much for coming out on a weeknight and spending time and being able to answer questions for us in the public. I want to thank the public for coming out, and we will continue this discussion, and ultimately, as Dr. Thornton said, we do need to take a vote before we can let new kindergarteners enroll, so we do not want to delay this too much longer. All right. Okay, we're going to go back to the rest of our agenda. Thank you, everyone. So the next item on the agenda is old business, discussion or vote to approve resolutions. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, yes. We have SCPI-01-2024-03, Owner Representation Service Payment, December 2023 to Colliers. This was tabled at our last meeting due to some paperwork that we didn't have in order. That is all in order. This has been vetted by the Fiscal Management Subcommittee. It passed 3 to 0, and I'd move passage to the entire full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-012024-03. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 6 to 0. Okay, next, under new business, item A, discussion or vote to appoint School Committee Member Mark Fiorello to the Cumberland Public Schools Renovations Building Committee. So this is for the BF Norton project. And these get appointed, new committees are appointed specific to the project. So, do we have a motion?
I will make that motion after asking Mr. Fiorello if he actually wants it, in which he said yes for now. So I will, I'll be happy to recommend him, I'll motion that he be, are appointed.
Appointed. Okay, so Mr. Collins makes a motion to appoint Mark Fiorello to the Renovations Building Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion?
Maybe this will, could Mr. Fiorello in a moment get longer with the school committee?
No.
We will have to determine a transition plan. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 6 to 0. The next item actually is just informational, there's no discussion or vote on this. School Department personnel named as Cumberland Public Schools Renovations Building Committee members for the BF Norton project, is what we're talking about? Or this, the current Ashton Community project? Must be the Ashton Community project, sorry about that. Include Dr. Thornton, Tim McGrath, our Director of Finance, Mike Chandler, Director of IT, Nidia Carvonic, the Ashton Elementary School Principal, and Cheryl Vaughn, the Community Elementary School Principal. Sorry, I think I misspoke earlier. Next item, C, discussion or vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2023-2024 school year. Motion, pleasure of the committee.
I'll make a motion to approve the home instruction request.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vogel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 6 to 0. Next item, discussion or vote to approve resolutions. Mr. Collins?
Right. SCPI, we have four of them left. SCPI-01-2024-16 through 19. All four of the resolutions passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee 3 to 0, and I would move passage to the entire committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve resolutions, SCPR-012024-16 through 19. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vogel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 6 to 0. Item E, discussion or vote to approve payment of bills?
No bills.
Woo-hoo.
Next time.
Thank you. And the next item, School Committee Comments, School Liaison Reports. Any comments from the School Committee? Next item, vote to go into executive session. I know we don't have executive session tonight. Next item adjournment, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mrs. Vogel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:26 PM.